All right, we are ready to start. Welcome to Spanish Fork City Council, March 1st. And we would first like to excuse Mayor Mendenhall. He is in Washington DC right now, serving on one of the boards he's currently on. So, we will move forward with the inspirational message by Steve Carlson. And you've got the prayer too?
I've got the prayer right after you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to let me address you tonight. The inspiration today is, my thoughts were on the spring fever I was feeling today is on hope, and kind of the way forward. I came across a quote by one of our former First Ladies, Lady Burt Johnson, that where the flowers bloom, there is hope. And I was thinking about that as I was coming here tonight. And Spanish Fork has a lot of the ingredients in the soil and the seeds to really grow. And I think our best days are ahead of us. So, I can't wait for the ballparks to be in full swing. And we have a bright future here in Spanish Fork. Beautiful buildings being built next door, new library, and we've got construction everywhere. So, we're definitely growing and blooming here in Spanish Fork. So, that's the inspiration, then I'll go into the prayer. I don't have any father. We gather here tonight as a community. We first want to recognize the efforts in Ukraine and have our thoughts and prayers with them over there. And back home, we bless the leaders in Spanish Fork to make the right decisions, not the easy decisions, looking towards the future. We bless the spirit to be with us here tonight. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. Will the audience please rise and repeat the pledge after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It does sound good. Okay, we would like to welcome Chris Shields, the Director of EMS Relations for Mountain View Hospital. If you're here, come right up to the podium and tell us about why you're here tonight.
Well, thank you very, very much. Thank you, Spanish Fork City Council. And I was hoping that Mayor Mendenhall would also be here, but hopefully he'll listen and he'll watch this.
He's watching, I'm sure.
So, I will also address him for the opportunity and the privilege to be here this evening to recognize Spanish Fork ambulance service as well as Spanish Fork police officers. So, let me do some quick introductions. First of all, we've got some, we've got the crew that was here that we're going to talk about a case. And we've also got some police officers here that were here, and we'll introduce those a little bit later. From Mountain View Hospital, I have Dr. Bear. He is the emergency department physician when our Christmas miracle patient came into Mountain View. He is also Spanish Fork's EMS medical director. And he is sitting right here. We also have Joe Fertitta. He is the emergency department director at Mountain View. We have Ruston Beck. He is the assistant administrator at Mountain View. Katie King is the chief nursing officer. And from Tempanogas Hospital, we have Kimball Anderson. He is the CEO of Tempanogas Hospital. And then I am Chris Shields, the Director of EMS Relations for Utah County. I work for HCA and Mountain Division for Utah County. And also, we also have the police chief, Matt Johnson here. So, thank you for coming. And then, we have the man of the hour, which would be Clint, right here. Clint Smith and his lovely wife, Sina, and his son, Jason, is that right? Yes, and his, their family. So, City Council members and Mayor Mendenhall, our purpose here tonight, or this evening, is to recognize a specific EMS crew and the police officers that were involved in saving a life. Clint Smith's life, and to be introduced to Clint and his family, to those rescuers that were there that day. Clint Smith, with Clint's consent, I'll start with a synopsis of Clint's cardiac arrest event, and treatment, and survival. So, on December 21st of last year, at about 2:20 PM, while at his home, Clint and his wife were preparing to go out shopping, to do some shopping, and suddenly Clint went down onto the floor. And seeing that he wasn't responding and having a great difficulty breathing, 911 was called at about 2:30 PM. And Jason, Clint's son, started CPR. Taylor Banks, the Smith's neighbor and a member of the Spanish Fork Ambulance Service, heard the page and responded to the call from his home. Taylor arrived at Clint's home and took over CPR. The crew working that day responded to the scene at about 2:31 and arrived at Clint's home at 2:35. The crew members and police officers at Clint's home went to work. They continued CPR, breathing for Clint, gaining IV access, administering medications, and shocking him several times with their defibrillator. At about approximately 2:47-ish, Clint regained a pulse, and they had established return of spontaneous circulation, which we call ROSC. The crew packaged him up on their gurney, and they started en route to Mountain View Hospital at about 2:52. And while en route to the emergency department, the EKG was transmitted to the ER, and the crew called in and gave their report. Mountain View Hospital's emergency team was waiting their arrival. An ambulance 62 arrived at Mountain View Hospital at 2:59, seven minutes after they left the scene. In the ED, Dr. Bear was the ED physician on at the time. Clint was sedated, intubated, placed on a ventilator. Labs and imaging were obtained and consults were made. Clint was admitted to the ICU. In the ICU, he was placed on hypothermia protocol. Consulting physicians were neurointensivists in cardiology. And in the ICU, Clint went into a fatal arrhythmia in where they converted him back into a normal rhythm again. Clint improved and was transferred to Tempanogas Regional Hospital for cardiology consult as well as electrophysiology, or EP cardiac consult. Cardiology took him to the cath lab to see if he had any occlusions in his coronary arteries that could have caused the arrest. His arteries were not the culprit of his arrest. On December 24th, the EP cardiologist placed a dual-chamber ICD, or an internal defibrillator, in Clint's chest to help prevent cardiac arrest from these fatal arrhythmias. Clint did well, and he was discharged from Tempanogas Hospital on December 25th and went home with his family and opened Christmas that evening. We call Clint our Christmas miracle. Seldom are EMS partners and police officers recognized for the work that they do every day. We celebrate life because of their efforts in saving Clint's life that December 21st. We bring together Spanish Fork EMS rescuers as well as police officers and rescue them this evening for their dedicated service and fine work and introduce them to the very person that they saved, and that would be Clint. They haven't met since that day. So, I'm sure Clint looks a little bit different than he did. If I could have you come up when I call your name, and I'm going to have Clint come and stand just right to the right of me, right here. And if you could come up when I read your name. Because I think that this is really important. You know, they do work every day, but to actually meet somebody that they have actually saved, that means so much to Clint, to his family. It is a privilege to be able to be here and do that. Officer DeWitt. Officer Bowman. Officer Leifson. Officer Smith. Taylor Banks. Let me remind you that Taylor was the first on scene. He must have been the angel that walked in, I'm sure, to his wife. Bryant Wood. Spencer Byrne. Spencer Bradford. Christopher Gruber. Christina Reed. Ryan Baum. And Josie Nielsen. As you can see, that takes a lot of people to save a life. And we're so grateful, we're so grateful to them. So, thank you, thank you, Spanish Fork City Council members and Mayor Mendenhall. And thank you, Spanish Fork EMS Ambulance Service and Police Department, for your great service to your community. I would like to just say one more thing. So, we have a plaque at Mountain View, and we also have a plaque at Tempe. And we have our crew members that when they save a life like this, we have their names on this plaque, and we recognize what they do in our EMS break rooms. And on this plaque, it says, "In recognition and dedication and service exemplified through a courageous act in an effort to save a life." And so, we are just very grateful that we are here and able to celebrate Clint's life. And I would like Clint, if he would, for just a few minutes, if he could say a few things, especially to maybe those that were there that helped save his life and to his family. And then, if we could get a picture of everyone here in front, would be awesome. And then, we'll meet outside and they can really, really talk, so. But thank you so very much.
I guess this experience has caused me to look a little bit differently at mortality. I was hoping not to get emotional tonight, but... Just a matter of minutes, or my granddaughter and my wife leaving the room for three or four more minutes, I wouldn't have made it. And I went back and looked at our doorbell camera and watched the entourage come in. I probably watched that five or six times. Saw these, the first guy we call an angel. I had no idea who he was. He just comes walking up from the north on the sidewalk, knocked on the door, and my wife didn't even know who he was, just let him in and took over for my son, who very thankful for him getting the process started. There's a lot of ugly in the world today, and it's nice to see people who will go out of their way to help others. Taylor didn't have to come up the street, he could have ignored that call. The EMS crew responded in such a timely manner, I watched the video again, and they were in and out in about 14 minutes, had me on that stretcher. She was right. 2:52, they pulled out, and to get to Mountain View Hospital in seven minutes is pretty amazing. So, I'm grateful to the EMS and the police officers, to the doctors, to my family for giving me a second chance at life. And I plan on having a second birthday every year, December 21st, and you're all invited who came to celebrate life twice in a year. So, I just want to say thank you. And thank you to the council and mayor for letting us have this event and recognize these fine people. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Chris, if I can just say thank you for making the effort to do this. Annually, the council and mayor meet with our police department and see all of the awards that our police officers receive throughout the year of these life-saving merits, and we hear the whole story. But we never, to my memory, have met someone. So, this is super special, and it's also super wonderful to have our EMS people that are also there, and everyone involved, and the doctors. The full story, it would be really neat to see this happen every single time, because you all do such incredible work that I know I would never be able to attempt. So, thank you. I don't know how you thought you could come in here and not have any emotions, because this is an emotional story, so we're glad you're here. Thank you.
Spanish Fork is very, very lucky.
We are, thank you. So, everyone to be in the picture, just come on up here and stand.
All right, we've got a few cameras, so get their smiles ready. Here we go. One, two, three. Stay awhile, looks great.
We need to text each other.
Thank you. Good job, you guys.
We'll give you all a minute to leave. We know you don't want to stay. I mean, if you do, feel free. Hey, Chris. Mayor Mendenhall just messaged us and said, "Great-looking picture." So, I'm sure he's just... Oh, thank you. Thank you. That was a super special night.
Now we have to do you?
All right. Well, we'll move on. Do we have, well, I better wait till people file back in, huh? Looks like we have some young men tonight.
Good-looking group.
Do any of you know Councilmember Euler? Yeah?
How you doing, Emilio?
We'll give it a minute for people to file in, and we'll move forward. Okay. The next portion of our city council meeting is public comments. Does anyone want to approach the council with any comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to council comments, and we're going to start with Councilmember Marshall tonight.
I am fresh out.
Really? Good, I'll make up for it. I have a whole list. Okay, Councilmember Euler.
Jesse Carter from the Chamber of Commerce wanted me to announce and make everyone aware that this Friday will be the Business of the Month Award that the Chamber presents. It is Esalen Ice Center has earned that for this month, so congratulations to them. Jesse told me to say that, so. So, congratulations to them. Look for the announcements and presentation on Friday. The only other thing I have, Mayor Protem, is that a week from tonight are the caucus meetings. If you've ever wanted to get involved or look for an opportunity to get involved politically, caucus night is a great way to do that. Become a delegate and look at the candidates that are running. We've got some great candidates running this time around, and so I would encourage everyone to participate in caucus night a week from today.
Thank you. Councilmember Argyle.
I don't have anything this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Nothing for me either.
Wow! Really?
Take it away.
Oh, I really have a list! Gosh, okay. Library, we have new board chair and secretary, and they were appointed in our last meeting along with the two... He said, "We performed a radar speed study at the intersection of 7th North and 300 West where the north-south stop signs were recently removed. Per national standard, 100 speeds were taken for each travel direction at that intersection." That's northbound, southbound. "Our study found that speeds in this area are typical of other residential collectors in the city. The average speed for the 200 vehicles recorded was just over 28 miles per hour, while the 85th percentile speed was between 32 and 33." So, we just wanted to let you know, we, we had a couple people concerned, but we think that once everyone's aware of that stop sign, things will go back to normal and they do plan to do a similar study in, in the upcoming months. So, just wanted to let you know that we're keeping our eye on that. And then, yesterday, I went to my last state capital meeting for the League of Cities and Towns and I was also able to sit out on the House floor with Representative Stephen White and I was with him for about 45 minutes and he is so passionate. Representative White took Francis Gibson's spot this past year and he has loved this session. It was really cool to see how that all came together and he showed me how he keeps track of all of the bills coming in and he takes note of every time anyone reaches out to him on a special bill. So, he showed me a specific bill that it said, "Spanish Fork City Manager Seth Perrins, Mayor and Council opposed. Springville City opposed. Mapleton opposed." So, when he goes to vote, that steers him in the direction where he's going to vote because he said he recognizes he represents us. So, these next couple days, on the last days of the session, we may get emergency alert items and I just wanted to remind you how important it is to follow through and let them know where we stand on certain issues. The next thing is Ms. Spanish Fork Paisley Heasley is doing the Ms. Utah Shoe Drive. This is the shoe drive, so not this quite yet. But, the shoe drive is for the next couple of months. She is running for Ms. Utah and all of the contestants are gathering shoes from all over the state. The contestant with the most shoes will actually win a humanitarian trip to Africa. So, our collection boxes are at the rec center and at City Hall and they just ask that you tie the, the pair together and those donations will be going to Africa later this year. And then, also with Ms. Spanish Fork, the pageant is coming up. Will you pull that up? It has all the information on it. There will be a candidate information meeting on March 17th at 6:30 here at the city office building. And all of the applications will be due March 28th and the program, the scholarship program will be held at Spanish Fork High School on May 21st. So, any young woman interested in receiving some money for their education, this is a phenomenal way to serve your community and make an impact where you live. And then, there is another pageant coming up. It's called the Ms. and Mr. Extraordinaire Pageant. And this program is designed to provide opportunities for those with special needs to be recognized and to perform on stage. This is open to area residents, so you don't have to be a Spanish Fork resident, 18 years old and under with special needs. This program is sponsored by the Spanish Fork Little Miss with funding from the RAP Tax Program. The event will include a production number, talent category and evening wear. And each participant will receive a crown and a sash. So, again, this is for special needs, young men and women in our community and you can sign up online at SpanishFork.org.
What's the date on that? Do they know yet?
Yes, the pageant will be on March 21st at 6:00 PM at Spanish Fork High School Auditorium and there's no fee to attend the pageant. Thanks for asking on that.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have. So, we will move forward.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Gordon first, Councilman Argyle second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any follow-up from any previous public comments or anything? Okay. Alright, let's go down to new business ordinance updating voter participation areas. Vaughn.
Thank you, councilmembers. State laws require the cities, each city to establish voter participation areas if they're at least a fourth-class city and we are a third-class city. These are necessary for if someone wants to initiate legislation or refer legislation that you've passed to an election, they need to gather signatures within the voter participation areas. And so, each one of these must be roughly equivalent in population and Utah County has helped us determine that based on the census and this is the revised voter participation areas in the city. So, I recommend that you approve the ordinance adopting the revised voter participation areas.
So, instead of, did we have 14? Now, we just got...
No, four. There are four voter participation areas in the city. They are composed of individual precincts, if you can see inside each one.
So, Chad, were you asking if this is different than what we used to do?
We used, we had 14.
Right, so, I'm not sure how many precincts are there.
Okay.
But, this is not voter precincts, this is a voter participation area comprised of several precincts. Does that make sense? We would rarely use voter participation areas only if there's an initiative or referendum.
Okay.
What's this?
That is attached to Q2 on the other side, other side of Route 6.
Oh, right there.
It's that little, little connection there. It looked kind of like a hole, I saw that too, but in an attempt to equalize the populations, you know, they had to draw the lines where they could. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance updating voter participation areas.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Euler, a second by Councilman Marshall, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's approved. Okay, next is a resolution allowing the city manager to sign impact fee reimbursement agreements and pioneering agreements.
Councilmembers, this is a request that from, from time to time, you get these on your agenda where it's a pioneering agreement or a, or reimbursement agreement for impact fees and they always go on the consent agenda. There's a pretty administrative decision whether or not somebody qualifies for a reimbursement agreement or a pioneering agreement where they've built things that are above and beyond what is needed for their development and so they're entitled to some reimbursement. This is a request to authorize the city manager to sign these types of agreements in the future rather than bring them to you every time for approval. Any questions on that?
Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution allowing the city manager to sign impact fee reimbursement agreements and pioneering agreements.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Marshall and a second by Councilman Argyle and this looks like it's a roll call vote, is that right? Okay, Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilman Beck, aye. Okay, that passes. The next one is resolution for power cost adjustment policy.
So, some time ago, the agency that we acquire our power from created a power cost adjustment, which basically takes the true cost of power and, and whatever higher or lower than it is from a base, they, they kind of tack that on to the bill each month. And the reason being is, is they're a nonprofit organization and they have set costs to run the agency and so they just basically made the cost of power a pass-through. And, and the way they did that is with this power cost adjustment. At that time, the city, as a nonprofit as well, adopted a similar factor for, for our power bills and that's been in effect for, for many, many years. One of the problems that it poses though is for some of our large users that might have $100,000 power bill every month, if that power cost adjustment is, is pretty high one month, maybe in a summer month or, or for whatever reason, when, when the cost of power might spike up, then that can be a significant change on their monthly power bill and they have budgets that they need to follow and, and keep track of. And so, what we are proposing is to actually take the average of the PCA that we get from the agency that we buy our power from and apply it to our PCA and then have maybe a more gradual change in the power bill over time, making it easier for these, these businesses to budget. We've looked at it, has kind of very little change on revenues and, and we just feel like this would make it easier on them. It, it really wouldn't have much effect on, on like the homeowner, they would never see that in their bills, but if your, if your, if your power bill's around $100,000, then you'll appreciate this.
I bet they will.
So, Chris, this is the third time we've talked about it, right? We talked about it, city council meeting here, we talked about it at Zermatt. So, we've been well briefed on the charts and the graphs. You didn't bring your graph today, I was a little bit disappointed. Jordan?
Graphs.
It was me, they're me, wasn't it?
He's an overachiever.
Just so the public knows, this is, we've been talking about this for a while now, it's now time for action and this is the recommendation from city staff, correct?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Chris. Do you have a motion?
I move to approve resolution, power cost adjustment policy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Gordon. I'm like blinking out up here. And the second by Councilmember Euler, all in favor?
Aye.
And it looks like a roll call, so Councilmember Marshall.
Aye.
Councilmember Euler.
Aye.
Councilmember Argyle.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck, aye. Okay, that passes.
I walk, or is it to ask yourself that question?
A little, not, not bad. Okay, board appointments for the airport board. Do we have?
It's himself.
Do you want to, it's like me asking, yeah, do you want to appoint yourself? Does anyone else want to appoint themselves to the airport board?
There's a couple of, there's a couple of scouts that might be better.
Well, by lack of anyone else volunteering, quite often, the city council sits on a lot of different boards and, and quite often, if it has to do with public works, they'll appoint the public works director as, as an alternate to that board since he or she usually attends those meetings and is kind of up to speed on, on the voting and stuff like that. And so, this same on the airport board and, and so, I guess it's being proposed whether the mayor, Pro Tem, I guess, wants to appoint me to be the, the alternate for the airport board.
Okay, awesome. Any questions?
Huge shoes to fill.
Huge shoes.
Well, it calls out Councilman Marshall as the, and it feels like we should do this as, we should replace that with council member, just because Shane won't always be the council member, over. Right? Are you okay with that? Perhaps, perhaps in a year or two, your, your role is going to change on this board. So, if we're, if we're going to make this motion, you know, do we have to do it again if it's not Chris?
Just to put the generic person.
The assigned council member.
Oh, okay.
Versus you, because then...
You know how long you're going to be here?
Yeah, just can't be changed to, right?
I'm with you.
That makes sense.
No disrespect. I move to approve airport board appointment of Chris Thompson as an alternate to the assigned city council.
Seconds. How's that?
That's good.
Okay, I'm, we have a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Beck, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one, we have a discussion about annexations, irregular configurations, islands and peninsulas. I'm guessing that's Dave.
Were you looking for this, Dave?
Do you need a?
Sure.
I'm really wishing I had put some graphs in this, but we'll see how this goes. Vaughn, you're going to help me out, right? There was a change to Utah code a few years ago that plays a pretty significant role in how annexations potentially can be configured. The process to get an annexation ready and reviewed to where it can be presented ultimately to you as the council for consideration as to whether or not to move forward to annex a particular area or not, takes quite a bit of time. And certainly, in my opinion, from Alani's perspective, is one of the more, one of the more important decisions for you to make. I think it's something that certainly requires a very deliberate approach and while there are no two circumstances and situations that are identical, our hope tonight is to give you some literally real-time examples of some things that we as staff have questions about, so maybe to get your feedback on those, perhaps tonight, perhaps in a future meeting, but at least to start some conversation this evening. Maybe also with the idea that over some period of time, you can craft some type of policy in terms of how you'd like us to perhaps work with potential candidates that might have some desire to annex into the city, to give them some direction and guidance as to what you are and are not comfortable with, again, with the understanding that there really are always different circumstances with every proposal. So, that being said, this is one example of what we're working with right now. In December, you approved an annexation, we called it the J6 Annexation, for properties over here, just to orient everybody. This is the runway for the airport, which we're talking about.
I was just about to say something too.
No particular reasons, no particular reasons.
Nate, can you put that in there?
Does anybody know what we're talking about here? Okay, so, north of the airport, this is 40 acres and right now, we have a petition to have these 30 acres annexed. As I understand it, the owner of these 10 acres here does not want to be annexed into Spanish Fork City. The change that are referenced earlier in Utah law prevents municipality from forcing, if you will, somebody with property in this kind of a situation, from being included in an annexation like this. Prior to 2017, that wasn't the case and I think because of that, we didn't typically have conversations like this oftentimes, at least with the councils that we worked with in the past. Generally, the sentiment was that if there wasn't a really good reason to leave somebody out and the majority wanted to come in and an annexation metal of the, the state statutes to be a valid annexation proposal, it was not uncommon at all in situations like this to literally force somebody into the community. However, that has changed completely. So, at this point in time, I, we have... This is the runway for the airport, which we're talking about.
I was just about to say something too.
No particular reasons.
Nate, can you put that in there?
Somebody know what we're talking about here?
Yeah.
Okay, so north of the airport, this is 40 acres, and right now, we have a petition to have these 30 acres annexed. As I understand it, the owner of these 10 acres here does not want to be annexed into Spanish Fork City. The change that are referenced earlier in Utah law prevents municipality from forcing, if you will, somebody with property in this kind of a situation, from being included in an annexation like this. Prior to 2017, that wasn't the case, and I think because of that, we didn't typically have conversations like this oftentimes, at least with the councils that we worked with in the past. Generally, the sentiment was that if there wasn't a really good reason to leave somebody out, and the majority wanted to come in, and an annexation metal of the state statutes to be a valid annexation proposal, it was not uncommon at all in situations like this to literally force somebody into the community. However, that has changed completely. So, at this point in time, we have a couple of options, and Vaughn, I'll let you maybe add a lot of flesh to this in just a quick moment, but we could potentially follow a path that would involve going to the Utah County Commission to get their approval, this is how the state statute reads, with their approval, we potentially could create an island like this. I'll just quickly touch on another example that we have. You're familiar with this area here that was annexed, I think finally, ultimately in December as well, the Utah West Annexation. We're now looking at what, for me, is kind of part two of that, right here, very similar situation in this case, relative to what it would do for the configuration of the city boundary, and just as a reminder, relative to the process that we went through, to have the Utah West Annexation approved, there are islands and peninsulas, two things that are both defined in state code, and in the case of the Utah West Annexation, we indeed did go to the Utah County Commission, and they approved, if you will, the annexation, that's, I mean, I don't almost equate that to, they gave it their blessing, you know, subject to the council ultimately approving the annexation, to create this peninsula, and therefore, you know, ultimately you move forward to approve that annexation right there. So, that being said, Vaughn's going to touch on a few different things relative to options that we have going forward, maybe to deal with, islands in the future, should they be created, and that we'd love to have just some conversation with you about some of these situations.
Yes, thanks, Dave. So, as Dave explained, you can create islands and peninsulas as long as the county commission and the city agree. So, that's what the law is on that. But what, maybe the second step of that is, what do you do where, when you have islands and peninsulas in your city? The state law allows cities to annex those, you know, obviously, somebody petitions to annex, then you can go through the normal petition process, and that's what's typical. But I think recently, they have added this provision that if an island or a peninsula has fewer than 50 acres, you can do that by a resolution process, you don't have to have a petition from the property owners. So, the city can initiate an annexation by resolution, for a small 50 acres or less. So, we can initiate the process, but the property owner says, we don't want to come in, we can't force them? No, you can. You can. You can with that, this provision. The second option there is, there's another one, and there's probably about four, there's another couple ones that might apply, but they're in rare circumstances. So, these two are the most likely ways that the city could do this. The second is to, if the area has fewer than 800 residents in it, and the city's been providing one or more municipal-type services for a year. So, it has to be, you know, the city providing those services as well as have fewer than 800 residents. So, annexations like this might qualify, or islands or peninsulas like the ones that Dave has shown you tonight, might qualify under one or both of those options for the city. I'm getting confused. Can you go back one? I totally agree. Hopefully, I'm not the only one. So, let's be very clear on this one. If this was before today, that piece on the bottom is 30 acres?
The whole thing's 40. They were saying the yellow and the piece next to it, so it's 10.
So, it's 10? Yep. So, I thought I heard Dave say, if we wanted this yellow piece to come in the city, we need the county's approval, and then we could create an island. We couldn't force that 10 acres in? At that stage, you couldn't force it in. If they petitioned annex, and because it's not an existing island or peninsula, it's basically concentric, it's a square, we'd have to wait for a petition to come in on that. We can't initiate it. The only, the only time the city can initiate it is if we own the property, or if it's an existing island or peninsula. Okay.
He's talking about a two-step, there's what Vaughn's.
So, we, this comes in? Step one, we receive a petition for the yellow? This happens, we can't force the? We can't force them in. All right. Six months from now, then we? Potentially, you could, right, if it created an island or peninsula. If there are situations where it doesn't create an island or peninsula, then we don't have that option available to us.
Only if it's an island?
Yep. That's just, I think the code is looking at getting more logical boundaries for a city, why leave islands and peninsulas, and so that's why it's in there. Vaughn, what constitutes a service that the city could provide? That's a really good question. I think it's municipal services, like any of the utility services. I think even EMS and fire services, police services, I think those would also qualify.
And you're saying, six months later, we could go and annex them out?
If it's an island, like in that situation, potentially, yes. You could do the same thing. You could create the island and one? Well, no, there's processes you've got to follow, right? Like, that has to be a completed annexation, and then you have to initiate, you have to do a resolution indicating your intent to annex the island, then you do this public notice period, and you have a public hearing, and then you do, adopt an ordinance to approve the annexation. Okay. Let's be clear, I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm just trying to figure out the steps. It has to be sequential. You receive your petition, finalize the annexation, then you start the next annexation. So, if it meets those two conditions that you mentioned, the city does not need to go to the county for? Right. It has to meet those criteria. If it's 50 acres or fewer, that one is, then that's the only thing. It's either or, it's not? Yeah, there's actually four options. I only listed two that are the most likely ones that we could employ. If it's 50 acres or fewer, or if it's fewer than 800 residents, regardless of the acreage, and you provide one or more municipal-type services for a year.
What was the theory behind making that?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
And was that at the same time that the law changed?
Yeah, I think so. Well, this option where the county and the city can agree, that one's pretty recent, I think it was 2018 on those, on those changes, that before, we just couldn't leave an island or peninsula at all, but then they allowed that to happen if the county agreed. And in my experience with Salem City, they've agreed on a couple times to allow, you know, creation of an island or peninsula, and a couple times here with Spanish Fork as well.
I think I have in my mind reasons why I would want to stay in the county and not be annexed in, but can you maybe verbalize some of those?
Just different zoning. I think sometimes the motivation to come to the city is the zoning, to develop. I think property taxes are lower in the city, actually, despite what people might believe.
They like the taste of well water?
Maybe.
I grew up on well water.
Well water, septic tank, you know, those sort of things. But when you come to the city, you start, you're hoping to get city services, city utilities, and city zoning. Vaughn is, would a property owner be liable for any infrastructure costs? So, for example, this property here, these guys choose to annex, let's say they needed to pay to bring some infrastructure down to them, which eventually, these guys could possibly benefit from, would they be liable for any of those? Only if they decide to develop. You know, if they're going to develop their property, then that's where the trigger for providing infrastructure would be. But annexation alone doesn't force somebody to develop, they can stay as they are, as long as they want. Just like, you know, we have pieces in the city, and then more right in the middle of everything that are undeveloped, that can still be developed in the future, that's the property owner that controls that decision. I think that's important for people to understand.
So, what exactly are you looking for from us?
Just like, your feedback, or?
Yeah. And to really put a firing point, I guess, on everything, if we were, no, I'm going to take one of them back. We're somewhat reluctant as staff to bring annexations through a process to you that would create an island. We have very little history of creating peninsulas that I'm aware of, we've never been a part of a proposal even, to do something like this, yet at the same time, we know that there are property owners here that have real interests, that they would like to pursue, that, I'm not trying to put anything in a negative light, but effectively, they would be held hostage and couldn't move forward, couldn't make any changes to the use of their land effectively, without being able to tie into Spanish Fork City utilities and different things like that, unless we were to move forward to annex those lands. So, that in particular, I think, is why we're somewhat sympathetic with the plight that some of these property owners find themselves in, just given how the law reads today. And would love, like I said, just to get your thoughts and ideas about your level of comfort with a situation like this, which in this particular case, this is a vacant piece of property. If it were annexed, it could be zoned in such a way that it would match what the property owners have by way of rights today in Utah County with Utah County zoning, and I think they'd see very little change, regardless of whether the property to the north of this 10 acres annexes or not. This area is going to change tremendously in the next few years. And those are just a few of the things I would suggest that are maybe worth considering there. This situation in my mind is at least a little bit different. We've already heard from a homeowner here. We haven't had conversations with people that have homes in this area here, but I'm inclined to think that they have some concerns about being annexed into Spanish Fork at some point in time. So, I think the narrative, should this move forward, likely is a little bit different. Yet at the same time, this is in an area that we also think is pretty ripe for some change, and probably will be in the relatively near future. And inasmuch as this peninsula was created very recently, personally, I think there's some logic behind trying to maybe mitigate just the impact that having county lands like this surrounded by city properties, the impact that that has on our ability to provide services in an orderly way, and to try to help facilitate orderly growth and development, and different things like that.
Did you say this one was, this one has been approved?
This one has, neither of the annexations that we're talking about here have been brought to you.
No, by the county?
Uh, no, no, not even that, which I don't think, so Vaughn talked about going to the county to get their approval on potentially creating an island and that sort of a thing. I'm not aware that we can do that before we have a valid annexation proposal, and that we've brought that to you for you to accept for further study.
So, these yellow parts, we don't even have a valid, right now, we don't have a valid.
We don't. I will say, in each of these cases, we're certainly very close.
Yeah, okay. But right now, there's no homes here.
I was thinking there was a home here, I may be wrong.
It's his farm.
Okay, so maybe it's just this one?
That is, there is homes, there's homes there.
Dave, I've got a question for you. In this situation, if this were to be annexed, and with the recent changes with power and the county's power, how it's provided, how would that come into play if this now becomes the city, and you've got an island that belongs to the county? Who provides that power? Is it still county power? How does that work?
So, they would be switched over to Spanish Fork City power. Chris, is that something that Spanish Fork City would bear the?
Not the unannexed area. And that would not, they would not be required to switch until they come into the city.
Yeah, so, just talking about the areas that were annexed.
But the county areas would remain county power, so you would provide that service?
Okay. Vaughn petitioned in the past to allow for certain, maybe one or two different utilities in some areas. I'm thinking of one near the golf course, where someone, they wanted to be hooked up to water, perhaps, right? And we've kind of, we've stuck to the decision not to do that, right? A la carte, or am I speaking correctly, Chris?
Yeah, the city council has the ability to grant that, but we, staff always recommends not, and the city council generally has never done that except for any emergency situations. But as far as on the power question, when we annex, we do pay to switch the power over to city power, just the annexed area, it's not the unannexed.
When you're creating an island, it can still be provided from outside of the city, even though it's now an island surrounded by the city?
Yeah, if they already are, and they just keep that. But the answer about the cost of it is, there is a little bit of a fee that's charged at annexation, and then the city then pays for all of the costs, and then we collect that back as the annexed area develops. So, in the end, the development pays for it, but we kind of front some of the costs.
I feel like you're really, really clear about one thing, and the reason that we're here tonight, we are not asking you to approve either of these annexations. We haven't started that process, it is a process, the process has meaning, among other things, like Vaughn mentioned earlier again, this can't happen without the approval of the county commission. So, that being said, again, just looking for any thoughts or ideas, and also, I think it's entirely appropriate, if you wanted to take time to think about this, and, you know, maybe we could have a follow-up meeting, sorry, follow-up conversation in a future meeting, but these are real issues that we try to work with property owners on in such a way that we're providing some predictable advice and guidance to them, you know, from the early stages all the way through the process, understanding that, you know, ultimately, until the council's approved an annexation, nothing's guaranteed.
Why did the county make this recent change? Do we know, like, why, what the reasoning was?
It's the state of Utah.
Not just the county, okay? County?
It had to do with some things in Salt Lake County, a couple of, well, one particularly large property owner in Salt Lake County that was concerned about potentially having some of their property forced into different municipalities, they share boundaries with a number of different municipalities. That's what I've heard from the legislative policy gal that helped write the change of the statute, so.
Vaughn? Do the two-step process, you have the 50 acres, 100, 800 residents, apply to islands and peninsulas? Yes. So, theoretically, and the hard part about putting examples up here, they're, we're talking in theory, and we tend to point directly to this, like, oh, I don't like this one, right? But in theory, we could make a resolution on this entire peninsula. And bring it into the city. Yeah, I think you could. You have to apply the definition of peninsula, that's kind of confusing, honestly, but wherever that peninsula exists, starts to exist, then you could annex that portion. Back on the other one, it's also a peninsula. Well, the square, I don't know, to be honest, I don't think that meets the definition of peninsula. Basically, it says it needs to be longer than it is wide, something like that. And so, that one looks like it's pretty much exactly square.
That is weird.
Yeah. With tony's. I don't know. I don't know. Is there a minimum lot size that would prevent being able to use, as I say, if somebody with an acre or less than an acre didn't want to come into the city, would we still allow them to stay in the county, or would it make sense to, at a certain size of property, we just try and? That's a really good question, Councilmember Euler. I think that's part of the decision that you would have to weigh. There's not anything in the law that says you can't do a small lot, or there has to be a large lot or anything like that. Those are the only criteria I pointed out, those, less than 50 acres or, you know, fewer than 800 residents. So, I don't know, it's up to you, really.
Well, I appreciated how Dave started out with, there are no two situations that are the same, right?
Right, right.
And what's interesting is, we have a couple of examples that are bringing us to this conversation, right? Which is interesting. I think one thing that I point out is the amount of time that, in this particular situation, we spent, you know, making a zone change for a certain particular use that's now not going to happen in this area, right? I mean, things change all the time, and I have to somewhat be, well, I do, I'm very respectful of the reasons that someone doesn't want to annex in.
Sure.
And if, and so, for me, you know, I appreciated Councilman Marshall some time ago saying, like, I got to have that plan really well thought of and sought out before. And so, I guess in my mind, have we really vetted the whole process with all property owners, or because now we have this tool set by, because of some standard set in Salt Lake, that, you know, we can now have an island, that it is a tool, but does then make it so that we just don't have to go talk with property owners or?
But, but does then make it so that we just don't have to go talk with property owners or work together?
No.
To get what's best.
That would be a mistake.
That's.
It almost, it almost forces us to talk more. Because now two bodies have to make the decision of whether or not to have an island or something like that. So it almost forces the public communication for both parties.
And it extends the process, and it definitely extends the commissioners.
Yep.
And I can't say this, I think Dave said this a few times, but I can't say it enough either, that not every situation's the same. Maybe the one on the north where you have development that is happening right now, if it were allowed to happen. Maybe that's a stronger case to do one. But, you know, there's, they're different geometry, they're different owners, they're different properties, they're different reasons, different stages of development. It's, everyone's different.
What happens if you want to bring a piece of city property or a, you want to annex a property that's an island in the county into the city? Is that possible?
Has to be contiguous to the city's boundary.
Right, so you get there somehow.
It has to be contiguous, yes.
Okay. It doesn't have to be contiguous, county property has to be contiguous, city property.
To annex to the city, it needs to be contiguous to the city boundary.
Okay. Alright, so we couldn't just say, hey, that piece of property in the river bottoms, that one little piece, that's city property?
No.
That's in this, not city property, that's in the city.
No, you can't, you can't have an extraterritorial island. I don't know how to say that.
That makes a lot of sense.
So we now, not right now, but in the near future, need to create a policy around this?
Policy is already created.
We have an annexation policy plan already, but I think what, what Dave and I are looking for is maybe just some thought and guidance about how to handle situations like these where do you want to go to the county and ask them to create an island or create a peninsula? To allow this other property to develop, for example?
Can I say that?
Say how you'd like to say it.
If you would never consider doing this, it would be great to hear that now. We'd save you and other people a lot of trouble if that were the case. So maybe that's the extreme way of looking at it. But that's a starting point, at least, I think, for the kind of guidance we'd like to get.
So you started this with, and Vaughn said it a couple of times, no two cases are the same. I hate that we can't put a policy together that makes us consistent.
Right.
It just drives me crazy. But I see why we can't. And so I don't think that we could say, no, we would never consider something like this, or yes, we would consider it all the time. It almost feels like the policy is, when this comes up, you bring it to city council and we have the conversation.
I agree. I'm definitely open to talking about it. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But you're also trying to avoid a lot of costs for, say, a developer, right? And do you look at it like it's in a situation where it's maybe not good planning? That we just go around and make these? Because if I'm the landowner on the very north piece, right? I mean, for myself, I gotta understand that perhaps I'm gonna get landlocked. I'm gonna get a fence put around my property and my 10 acres, you know? It, it's really bad, so then if we really vetted that process with that landowner and said, hey, this can happen, you know, do, you know what I mean, are, are we really all at the table? And before we spend a lot of money, I think that's what I'm hearing you say, right? Don't go down all these roads with, with a lot of engineering and planning.
Right.
If this is not a.
I appreciate one thing you said, in terms of bad planning, the change in state law has forced communities to consider growing in very poor ways. And that's, that's why we're here.
So, back to the previous. The other one, can you go back?
Going back to the other.
Yep. So, the, the stuff in the yellow, when you made the comment that there are, obviously, we've done this because of some situations that are being, and that, that concerns me very much about what Brandon said about we annex property in with a particular purpose and that purpose does not happen. We've vetted this three, four, maybe even more times, and you know what the answer is here? This, this one right here is not something I think you need to bring back to us, I think you already know the answer, Dave.
About their disposition, that property owner?
They're, they're not. Us to make a resolution to do that, to me, there's no services being provided here, there's nothing right now that's being provided here. But if we're gonna keep this 30 acres from going forward with a project that's gonna cause that, I, I don't want to do that. But I also don't want to make a resolution to put that 10 acres in the city because that's not.
Vaughn, can I ask?
That's that one particular, the other one I would like to talk more about.
So another question, it's possible scenario, let's say, let's say this, this entire piece of property right here, up to about right here, was, belonged to another city, well, in Spanish Fork. And they received an annexation policy for this or an annexation request for this. Could this piece of property then at that point choose to create an island even though it's going to another city?
So, in this situation, the annexation policy boundary is that 4,000th South Road between Springville and, and Spanish Fork.
And that can't change?
You can, but it takes the, the, the two cities to agree to have property that's in one policy plan go to another city. So, if you agree to that, you could do that.
We've done that.
Both councils.
Both councils, yeah.
We have done that near, uh,
Highway 50.
Highway 50. It just made sense that the development was right there, and so, correct?
Right, and you.
A lot of those that, with the last few years, right?
Right.
A peninsula that that boundary doesn't exist. And so could that be kind of a knuckle that, that could go into that other city and leave that island?
Yes.
And it wouldn't necessarily be an island because it's between two cities now?
No, it would be an island. So we have an island on the east side of town that is created because it's surrounded by Spanish Fork and Mapleton on the east. But that's an island if it's surrounded by cities.
Doesn't have to be the same city.
No.
It's the county property within the cities.
I think my thought is, it would just be important for me to know that the developer has done its due diligence in talking to the surrounding properties. And that the landowner would approach the city council and tell us why they do not want to be annexed, so we can understand their perspective.
Yeah, if they're willing to come and, and talk to you. I mean, I, the way I see it is, if somebody submits a petition for annexation, that first step you have is to accept for further consideration. And that just kind of allows it to go forward through its process. And I think that's when you could do those kind of investigations, talk to the developer, talk to the landowners that may or may not want to come in, and, and find out the reasons and see, see what they're thinking.
I like the idea of kicking that off with, this could create an island if you move forward, do you still want to move forward? And then explore everything that may or will tempt you to say.
Let me, let me add something to what, what Vaughn said, and I think in the process that you have, that annexation petition acceptance has, I think historically, been somewhat of a
Formality.
Formality, right? And you almost always, if not always, accept it because the study process will bear out whether or not you want to annex it. But I think that's a really good place for you to have some of this initial dialogue about the concerns that you have. Because if you want to create or don't want to create that and you know that right away, I think it spares a lot of heartache and trouble for the various applicants and, and non-applicants, if you will. Going forward that, you know, in this particular case, I don't see this going forward for these reasons. And so you've.
Or it could go forward if I knew this, this, and this, and that, go find that out.
And, and so then, in these special island-creating, peninsula-creating, annexation petition acceptances, it might not be a formality, and you might say, we're gonna table it. And you've got some homework applicant to work on in order to satisfy these concerns, is that something you could see being positive for? I mean, the applicants may not like it because it's, it's something they have to do. But we're considering growing the city's boundary and providing services to this area forever. If that, this is one of the most important duties that you have as a legislative body to say, we are going to take this area and make it part of our city. And it, it, it isn't something that should be taken lightly, so I, I think it's appropriate.
Maybe I should emphasize, sorry.
Go ahead.
What Seth said, I absolutely believe that taking that first step, that annexation acceptance, much more seriously than we have in the past, and I'm not saying necessarily we've taken it too lightly before. But some of these things, I think, need to be vetted much earlier on in the process. And that being said, the state law kind of ties our hands a little bit as to how that happens. So, rather than to continue it at the acceptance, we might say, hey, this isn't ready for acceptance.
Right.
We have questions that need to be answered before you even accept it.
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify that, if we don't accept the petition for further consideration, it's deemed accepted. So, there is really no tabling at that stage, you either accept it or deny it. Because it's gonna be accepted otherwise. So, but you can obviously have those conversations, send those clear signals, we, we need to explore this more. Like Dave said, you could just reject it and say, come back when you have some answers and refile your petition then, so.
I guess what I was going to ask was, yeah, Dave. It's been in place for four years now since the state made a change, right? And is it just happenstance that we've got two potential situations? Because historically, obviously, not historically, but over the last 10 years, it's not really been an issue. And obviously, uh, the last four could have, we could have had other opportunities, but have had none. Can you speak to that? Why?
We've had willing participants in annexations. The last one that this would have affected actually is Annie's Acres and the property that the townhomes are being constructed on next door to that. I think we had the family that has land that's now becoming Annie's Acres that went through the effort to put the petition together, signed the petition and everything like that, and because there were homes on those properties and different things like that. They met a particular value threshold that needed to be satisfied and they had a certain area threshold met to where the property that the townhomes are being built on now was just swept in with everything else. So that probably happened just before this law change occurred. So it certainly would have impacted that. And I'm trying to think of other annexations that have happened in the meantime, we haven't had a lot recently. We had the Swift Creek one and did that by resolution, like Vaughn said, because of this change in law, the Baum family there, at their property. And in the end, they actually got on board with the idea of being annexed in the city, so that kind of became a non-issue. But, yeah, it, it took us a few months and consultations with a number of different attorneys around just to make sure we were understanding things the right way. This was a sea change in terms of what municipalities can, can't do with annexations.
Okay. Do you feel like you have direction?
I really appreciate this, I, I do, and we have some folks here tonight that I hope also appreciate this conversation. It absolutely impacts some things they're working on, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, our next item of business is the Dave Berg study.
Okay, several years ago, Dave Berg, which is a national consultant, came in and studied the Spanish Fork City Power Rate. And part of that study is, they said, okay, now that a lot of residents are coming with solar panels on their roofs and getting what's called a, a net metering agreement where sometimes they're producing more power than they can use, and so that goes back onto the grid. And we, they get a kind of a credit for that, and it goes back and forth and, and, and creates a situation where you can have a resident have a zero power bill if they built their solar panels big enough. Problem with that is, they need the city power system. And that system requires money to maintain. And so if you can imagine, if the whole city, all the residents, put solar panels on the roof, how would we collect money to maintain the system that they need to give them power during the night? To, to push their extra power out onto the grid? And so we wanted to make sure we had a system in place that could accommodate solar panels on, on roofs, but was sustainable. And so that we didn't have to limit it to only a certain amount or any of that. And so the Dave Berg studied it and they said, okay, well, if you set your base rate, which then was $3.50 a month, to around $23 a month, then you'll collect enough money, whether they use any power or not, or at least the balance was zero. You'll collect enough money to maintain the parts of the system that, that, that you need to maintain for them. And so, recognizing that going from $3.50 to $23 and change was a pretty big jump. At, at, the city council at that time voted to a gradual process of getting there. And what it entailed is some, no, what we call revenue-neutral changes, where the base rate went up and the usage rate went down. So that basically, even though you're paying a little bit higher base rate, you're gonna pay a little bit less for your usage. And we, and we aimed at kind of the average power bill and said, okay, if, if we can make the average power bill stay about the same, then, then we'll slowly migrate to $23 for the base rate. And so, this last year, UNPA hired Dave Berg, the same consultant, to do a study for all of, for, for not only UNPA, but for all of the cities that are a part of UNPA. And so, as part of that, we asked them to take another look at, at our, our net metering type adjustment and just make sure it was a correction, thinking that maybe that $23 could have changed over the years. And the study was very interesting. It, it said that $23 was actually still pretty close to the right amount that we would need to arrive at. But we had reached a critical mass on the, the usage rate in 2022 and recommended that we not lower that any longer and, and just make the last three changes to the base rate. As shown there, a, a dollar each year until we reach $23.50. The study also recommended that we make some similar changes to the non-residential rates that we have and, and, and create some corrections where their base rates were more in line with, with residential base rates. He said it, it, it actually is pretty abnormal to have a higher residential base rate than a commercial base rate. And, and this provides some of that equity in, as more and more entities or residents go to, to solar, we still are collecting enough to keep the system maintained how we have it. And so with, with this change and with these changes on the businesses, again, he's, he's tried to design it so they're, they're relatively revenue-neutral to these businesses. But you can see that the usage rate is going down. Again, it, it, it goes down here, but then it, then it stays the same and then same here. So it kind of falls residential, but it has this correction here to be revenue, revenue-neutral in the first year and then holds through here. Anyway, we wanted to show this to the city council and kind of apprise you of that and then propose this in the upcoming year's budget.
I totally get the revenue, and I like the idea that we're shifting the total cost from a fixed fee to, well, from a rate fee to a fixed fee. That makes total sense to me. But why does it stop now? Why does the rate, why are we increasing the overall bill in the last three years?
So, so one of the things that, that this rate represents now is what it actually costs from our UNPA agency where we buy power. And, and it creates an unsustainability if you're actually buying power and then selling it for less than you're buying it for, is, is kind of his argument. He says you should, you should have that be about the lower limit.
What's the increase of our solar in the city? People?
Uh, I don't know that, we get about, would you say about 30 a year?
I think we have just over 300, I'd say it's maybe like more than 50 or 60.
Yeah, about 50 or 60 a year, about 300 residents now.
So it is increasing?
Yeah.
But that one residential, sorry, commercial, right? You could have one commercial that was. You could have one commercial that was the equivalent of a lot of homes, right? So, does the thirty a year bring in one
The amount of commercial?
Large box store that might want to cover their roof?
I don't, I don't believe so. I think, I think.
Well, we still have a percentage, right? We're only going to allow our, is that, is that a true statement?
Yeah, yeah. So, right now, when we arrive at twenty-three fifty, it, it, it may be amenable to not have a limiting percentage, according to Dave.
Okay. That was kind of my thought when Shane was asking his question.
Yeah.
Before, when we were structuring all this, it was, we will only allow so much solar on our grid, if you will. Like, it was a percentage. But I, I can see where if we're going to go up to a higher tier, then you could have more.
Yeah.
It would open the door to more people having solar if they choose.
Yeah. And, and in fact, so before we had this, the way that cities defended against having an unsustainable system is they said, okay, if we only have five percent, we can kind of absorb that cost and have the ninety-five percent of the residents kind of subsidize the, the maintenance costs that these five percent are creating. And a lot of cities kind of did that in the name of conservation, you know, it, it's using renewable energy and things like that. And so, you're right, overall in power, that, that maybe if we had a whole bunch of residents come in, put solar panels, maybe we wouldn't have to develop as much power for a business if they use their power during the day. If they use their power in, in the wintertime, when it's overcast and all the solar panels are not creating, you know, power, and so all these homes that have solar panels are now drawing power, we have to create a system that supplies energy for the peak. So, for, we still have to build generation all over in order to supply all the residents and all the businesses power when you have an overcast day and very little solar energy is being created. So, the, probably if a, a business comes, even if we have a lot of solar type customers, probably we still have to build generation that's not solar, because it, it only comes when it's sunny, if that's, if that makes sense. So, there's a, there's a little bit of offset, but not as much as people think.
I got there now. So, what should have happened is we should have went from, crap, I had it in my head. No. We should have went from where we were to twenty-three fifty that year, made it revenue neutral, and would have been fine. Because the rate of our power has increased over time, we're not, we can't offset the increase in the base rate any longer, because power costs more money. So, these two things are not coupled together any longer. They're separate. We took, we took too long to raise the base rate.
Yeah, we might have been a little bit too generous on going six years.
It needed to be twenty-three fifty in 2021. But we decided, we collectively decided, to change that over time and make it revenue neutral. We can't make it revenue neutral any longer, because the cost of power is too much. But it still needs to be twenty-three fifty.
Correct. So.
But the reason we did that is to keep that cost down, because at the time, we only had five customers that was on solar, knowing that that was going to increase. So, that was the, that was why we.
I get it. I mean.
We didn't, we didn't want to increase this.
A hundred dollars and your bill wouldn't have changed. It's three bucks. I mean.
One, one of the main reasons why the city council voted to do it the way they did at that time over six years, and it was aimed to, at six years, have the final lower to the six. And you're exactly right, that this number has increased. So, and that's why, you know, we landed a little bit sooner than we did. But at that time, we've, we had probably about, would you say eighty residents that, that had already purchased solar panels on their house? And when they do that, they calculate what's called an ROI, or return on investment. And so, they take out a loan, or they take, you know, they spend fifteen thousand dollars to get these solar panels, and they're like, okay, based on the city rates and with maybe a little bit of growth, I should be able to pay this off, you know, before it wears out. If, you know, and hopefully sometime, the sooner the better, but before it wears out. And, and so, we actually got the president of the solar, Utah Solar Association, who represent a lot of these residents, a lot of the businesses that create solar, come in. We, we called in a dozen or two residents that had solar panels on the house, and we said, okay, how do we do this? How do we make this sustainable so that not just you, but all your neighbors can have solar panels, but yet not, not make it hard financially on you, who've kind of bought under existing conditions? And, and that's what we had worked out with them. And with very little protest, we were able to kind of come to consensus together as a group and come up with this six-year plan. And, and again, it's, it's hard to predict rate increases in the future.
I'm not judging. It sounded like I was, but I didn't mean to. I was just trying to figure out why we didn't keep it revenue neutral over the course of the six years, and it's because power has gone up. You couldn't. So, I got it. I'm good now.
One other thing.
And we didn't want the residents who didn't have solar that subsidy to start. Yeah.
So, so one other thing, Seth was able to look up on his phone how many solar customers we've received in the last couple of years. We actually, in the last two years, we got a hundred new customers each year. So, we must have been just over a hundred before that. And then, so, so, the, the growth in solar customers is actually going up quite a bit. And, and, and some people thought it might, once, once we hit twenty-three fifty or close to that every month, that maybe it would be less enticing to do solar on, on your roof. But we're finding that actually the opposite is true. And we really wanted to create a system where you didn't have to limit how many people did solar. And, and Dave Berg is saying, once we arrive at twenty-three fifty, that's, that's not an issue.
You shouldn't, we shouldn't have a system that limits that, but we shouldn't have a system that penalizes those of us that aren't under solo, solar, and help subsidize those that are, right? It needs to be fair. And that's why the twenty-three fifty is, is a good number, because it makes it fair. It costs twenty-three dollars and fifty cents per household to run our system, basically. And then you pay for the power on top of that, whether you do solar or buy from the city.
Exactly.
I got it.
So, Chris, Phil, and Dr. Brandon's comments earlier. Schedule one is net metering for residential. Is schedule two then net metering for commercial? Is that what that is? Or is that just a commercial, commercial power?
Yeah. So, so, this is general commercial, and, and this applies to most businesses. This is residential, obviously. And then GS2 is a, an area around the hospital and a little bit of Costco area, where the city came in and used power money to help get some infrastructure and to bring the Costcos and the Lowes and those type of businesses here. And then, part of that agreement to do that was, we would create a GS2 area where we charged a little bit more on their power bills to collect that back. And we, we recently did an analysis of how much we've collected back. And there's still several more years needed before we collect that back from the GS2. And then we have the large service, the large power source where, where a company that, that we, we might want to attract a Spanish fork, but they're going to use a huge amount of power, we give them a bolt discount.
Kevin, commercial business, am I able in Spanish Fork to put solar on my business? Again, net, net metering rate?
If I remember right, it's a percentage as well of your rooftop, but.
One thing to be aware of, Kevin, this rate's not specific to net metering. This is the rate for both net metering and not, those not on.
Okay. So, for those on TV who might not have heard that, these are the, these are the rates for, for the whole city, not, not just net meter.
So.
And, and philosophically, that's, that's what you want. You want a base rate and a usage rate, so it's across the board, that works for everyone. That's why they, they lowered. If, if we were just making a, a net metering rate, we could have, we could have adjusted it differently.
So, follow up question then. You were talking to Seth. Are there any commercial businesses, or as a commercial business, am I able to put solar on my rooftop and would I get the net metering rate as a commercial business?
I don't, I don't believe there's any restrictions. If, if, if you're commercial, there is a limit that we have with UNPA, where if, if you're a large business, you have to actually have an agreement with UNPA, which is, provides our power. We have, we, we and all the other cities that are a part of UNPA have an agreement with UNPA that we will purchase all of our power through them. Now, they've made exceptions for small, I think, under five kilowatt hours, I think is the, the limit, but, or, and at, at any rate, as, as long as you don't exceed five kilowatt hours.
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five. At any rate, if, as, as long as you stay below that limit, then you can go and, without a UNPA agreement. But if you get into the larger businesses where you have a lot of power supplied, you have to get an agreement with UNPA, because you're actually kind of creating an offset in the power that they supply. So, on a, you know, cloudy day, when not much power, also, they have to ramp up all of their generation to provide power to these businesses. And, and, and it, it does have an effect on them. So.
And you're saying, so we roughly have three hundred?
Three hundred eighty solar customers is what I, is that the asset?
So, a little over two percent of the thirteen, roughly thirteen thousand homes in Spanish Fork, correct?
Yeah.
So.
It's quite a few.
And, yeah, it's, it's, it's growing, obviously, the last couple of years. But interesting that, that large, I thought there was a, I thought there was a cap on a large building.
There is. There's a kilowatt hour.
There is, right? So, they can't just cover the entire roof.
Seven twenty-five is.
Yeah. Okay.
Some people might be listening to this and think, man, that's terrible. Why are you doing that? And, and the issue is, and when we had this room full of the solar customers, it was kind of a fun discussion. We were fully expecting to be shot, because this was their homes and this was their, their finances that we were kind of reaching into. And, and it was a wonderful discussion, as we, I think we had two or three sequential where we kind of presented the concept, got some work, work assignments from them, gave them some assignments, came back, and, and we really enjoyed it. But when you understand that you can't exist without our power system, that's when somebody says, oh, I see why I have to make a payment every month. I have to have your power system, one on a cloudy day, two in the wintertime, and three, to do something with my power when I generate too much. And, and they got that. And so, for a business, when a business has a very large roof, and they, they say they put, you know, their, their five acre business, what is that? Five acres would be two hundred and fifty thousand square foot building, right? They put all of that underneath, or solar panels on top of that, they might be able to offset their power. But we still have to be able to provide power at the snap of a finger. And so, that's why UNPA limits that ability, because we have, we have to be able to replace that when the sun doesn't shine. And they have, they're, they want that. And, and when they realize that, they say, okay, it's not, it's not feasible for me, because I can't call that power for whenever I want. For those businesses that are large, we've got a really great opportunity for them, as we've been discussing with you somewhat, this shared solar program. UNPA can work out an arrangement where they don't need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe millions of dollars, putting those solar panels on. They don't have that upfront expense, but they can buy into and, and get their power from our solar farms that we have through UNPA and, and not have that tremendous upfront cost. We can call that, we can work through that. And, and so, it, it works really well for them. So, they do have that limit, and, and that I don't think is negotiable. That may be something that we can negotiate in, as, as the cities and areas grow and stuff. But right now, it's just not negotiable because of the functionality of replacing that power when it's cloudy, rainy, or whatnot.
Okay, thank you. Are you done, Chris, or do you have more?
I was just gonna say, I think Brandon is right. I think we did increase the limit on houses that could do it to ten or fifteen percent, with the, the theory that as we approach that limit, if this worked the way we thought it would, that that could be increased more. But I think that might still be in the ordinance. I can look that up for you.
Thanks. Thank you. So, our last discussion tonight is the March twenty-second.
Yeah. So, I, last year, we had a couple of council meetings that, that caught some of us by surprise. So, I want to just draw our attention to a couple of those weird ones and highlight that in March. So, first of all, in March, we have previously planned and scheduled that our council meeting in March would be on March twenty-second, not on March fifteenth.
No. Chad and I will be at a water conference. But, part of the reason why we're talking about this, and we'll talk about July and, and December in just a minute. That's a fair argument, Shane.
Obviously, you just well cancel it.
The reason I didn't have it on the fifteenth was because you will be at Parks Unracked.
Oh, well, that's. Well, then we should have it on the fifteenth.
Do you need to update your calendars? I'm just curious.
It's two weeks from now.
As long as you follow the mayor's standard, you're, you're way.
Seth, let's get back to you.
Oh, no, this is exactly what I wanted. I just dropped the bomb, let you guys tear each other apart, and I'm walking. So, we have, we have the meeting on the twenty-second. And if I understand right, we've got two of you at the water conference. And I think the mayor is also at that water conference.
So, it's just us?
So, the way that council meeting can be on the twenty-second is you all have to be here, number one. And.
They'll send Chief Johnson to get you.
Interestingly, a no vote by one of you is, it, it fails. So, a two-one vote.
So, we want to cancel this meeting?
No.
Oh.
So, well.
Mayor Pro Tem, she's already in. Let's go, Stacy.
So, the question that we had as staff is, let's see, the twenty-second, yeah, so the twenty-third, the rest of you are, should be at the.
UNPA.
UNPA conference. So, as we're talking about this, we're, we're comfortable, obviously, as staff, moving forward with the meeting on the twenty-second. We just know that you three have to be there. And if you, one of you three isn't there, then the meeting has to be canceled. Or. That's, so that's for the twenty-second. Or, we could look at doing the meeting the week of the fifteenth on a different day, which is not traditional. But we could do it on the sixteenth or the seventeenth. Not all week, though. Right? You guys should be back Wednesday night.
Tuesday, Thursday, like Thursday?
I'll be out of town till Thursday.
I'll be at the garbage conference on Thursday.
That's actually true.
You just take on three nights, if you're gonna get Thursday night? This is what you signed up for?
And is the fifth Tuesday off the board?
This really has to be debated publicly?
It's either one, or I, I can't have this conversation with each of you individually. You kidding me? That would be, well, okay, now, hold on. Stacy said, okay, Brandon, that would be impossible.
Is the twenty-ninth?
So, the twenty-ninth is certainly a possibility, but we will have, we will then have two meetings back to back, right? The twenty-ninth, and then we'd meet again on the fifth of April.
Well, I think it's either that or you cancel it. We have a marathon, the first of April, meeting, where you just cancel it. I'm okay having a twenty-ninth meeting then.
Well, we're fine to have the meeting on the fifteenth, so long as these guys are all here.
The twenty-second.
I'm sorry, thank you, the twenty-second.
I'm fine with the twenty-second. I'm fine with the evening of the seventeenth.
I will be at a garbage conference on the seventeenth.
Are they all? I've never heard them say they'll all be here.
I will be here on the twenty-second.
I will be too.
So, again, that's.
I need some conditions. If it's just us three, and I'm mayor Pro Tem, no public hearings. What else? What other conditions do we need to sign?
Donuts, cake, and ice cream.
I feel like there is something in, in some kind of written text where it says, as soon as you give somebody power, it goes right to their head.
Do what you want, we'll be here.
Virtually, absolutely. Yeah. And we can do that as well, so much, in so much as you guys can and want to. We could figure out a way to remote you in. So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Chad. It's not quite as rigid as thou shalt all be here or we're dead. Okay. So, what I heard, clear as a bell, is we're meeting on the twenty-second of March. Okay. Now, just to be sure, that we're all doing what we need. Now, just to be sure that we're all doing what we need to be doing and no surprises, July, let's turn our calendars to July.
Oh, wow. Slow down, Turbo.
Well, April, May, and June are all the same.
Can I announce that? Because I doubt any of them have marked their calendars.
All right.
Stop that.
July twelfth.
Thank you, Brandon. We've got it, we'll be there.
July twelfth.
What's July twelfth?
In the month of July.
Right there.
You guys.
Bring your cowboy hat. Would you pull the ordinance up?
Would you like to pull that up? That would maybe be helpful for that.
I think I may approach him that right, July twelfth, yeah.
July twelfth is the council meeting that we have set for the year, right, for July. So this is, we would have done this back in December this last year. So just so we're all clear, we are planning for the council meeting to happen July twelfth, not July fifth, nor July nineteenth. Okay, July twelfth. Any questions, any concerns? Will one of you please make sure that's on the mayor's calendar?
I actually talked to him.
Mayor, are you watching still? He was watching earlier.
He said he may be out of town on July twelfth.
All right, December, so we are going to go to December. In December, we typically have a meeting, we would typically have a meeting on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. However, sometimes we have a meeting on the second Tuesday of the month because some of us end up being out of town.
We already decided that, didn't we?
Yes, we have decided all of these, Chad. I'm just remembering, I'm reminding so that, yes, so we don't have any snafus in the year 2022. We were what we were in 21, we are not that anymore, we are better today.
Thank you, Seth. I think that was good to reveal.
Okay, so December sixth, we will meet, not the second Tuesday of that month, nor the third Tuesday of that month. We will respect the crazy calendars that you have in December, and we will only have one meeting. It will be the first Tuesday. Yes, some of these are weird, but they are weird for reasons because we've looked at our calendars, we've tried to look ahead at our calendars and no one's gone. All right.
I move we go into closed session for land transaction and reasonably imminent litigation.
I have a motion by Councilman Gordon and a second by Councilman Euler. A roll call, boy, Councilman Ardile.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck, aye. Okay, we're done here. Thanks for being here. Did you get enough calendars?